Welcome everybody to Town Hall Meeting Number 90. It's March 26th, 24. And today we're joined by quite a long list of people. Let me go ahead and call you out. Thanks all for being here. Today we have Guillermo, Judith, Rojo, Taffo, CJ Frankie, Clement, Juke Peter, Frankenstein, Hogan Tuso, Sugar and Spice in the waiting room. Uh, we've got Whoofy Omer, we've got Ian, we've got Nebula, we've got Onyeka, Slate, Tommy, Vanessa, William, and and Autopilot, also very welcome. Thanks all for being here and sharing your time with us. Today the main, um, agenda item will be the workgroup updates. It's the last Town Hall of the month, so yeah, that's reserved for workgroup updates. Previous month that fell apart a little bit with the BGI Summit, uh, but we're back. Uh, we'll start out with a couple of mentions before that, and if there for some reason happens to be additional time available, um, there can be some open topics. Then a quick reminder on what the Ambassador Program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're all, uh, we're a group of people aligned with the mission and vision of Singularity Net and wanting to contribute uh, to that and share, uh, spread the word. We have a broad lineup of workgroups as you'll see during this call, and these are self-organized and you're very welcome to join any of them. If you're interested in joining in, you can hop onto our Discord server. And there's Getting Started channel which gives you all the information to get started. Then two mentions, um, there was originally planned, um, a supervisory council session, um, today after this Town Hall, uh, that unfortunately had to be cancelled for personal reasons. Uh, that will be coming soon. There's no date picked right now, but that will be shared shortly.
There is a date picked. It's next Tuesday, 1pm UTC.
Amazing. Okay, okay. Let me do a quick check. Even on the calendar. Perfect. Alright, that's cool. Uh, yeah, so the soon is next week. That's pretty soon. Then, uh, the second mention would be that, uh, the governance decision for co-contributors is live. Uh, you can find a link to, uh, Google Form in the, uh, Governance Workgroup channel. The core contributors have been tagged, so you will be notified. And this is on the, uh, quarterly budget for quarter one. That line for, um, filling in the form would be coming Sunday end of day UTC. It's a relatively straightforward, uh, form. Simply asking if, what are you, um, consent with, with, um, implementing the budget proposal? And we also provided, let me quickly check. Yes, um, in the same post, there's also a link to an explainer document. Kind of outlining the, the whole consent process and how this would work. So do take a look at that. And yeah, if you have the core contributor tag, please do fill in that form. And then end of Sunday we'll have clarity on whether we can actually implement the Q1 budget. And it won't be long before the next, uh, vote will be coming up. That's gonna be next week. Um, likely on the naming, but also seeing timelines, uh, Q2 budget is coming up shortly after that as well. A quick check in the room if I'm skipping anything I should call out on this governance decision? Just wanted to make sure, but I think I covered. It's relatively straightforward, um. Alright, that-
Peter, will it be like a live vote on the Zoom call?
No, it's asynchronous. It's a, a Google Forms submission.
I see, okay.
Yeah, it was kind of figured with 31, um, eligible people to weigh in on the decision, um, that's yeah, that's not gonna be feasible to, to have that live. Uh, we might experiment with that. I would be open to that, but, um, for this very first, um, iteration of the, the governance process with this wider group, it was decided to do it asynchronously instead.
Uh, and how are we supposed to, are we whitelisting specific emails or?
Um, you're asked to enter your Discord name. So there will be a check, um, and if your Discord name is not a Discord name with the contributor role, then it will not be considered for now.
Yeah, but then I can vote for TiVo, right?
Great points, um. Did we have a fix for this? Not sure if we did, to be honest.
Yes, you can if you want to throw in some security concerns, but the team will look at the results and then we will find out complications.
I would say does make an argument for capturing email addresses.
I, I think perhaps activating that feature. If it's a Google Form, then there is this feature where you're taking the email that was used to sign in, but that might help, I guess.
I'm inclined to agree, um. Such a simple thing during the very first, uh, I mean, that's why it's the first one, right?
Yeah, we didn't have this concern because when we thought we shared it, we shared it with four contributors and if they are here to cause troubles, then we are in trouble in first place. But they are now, SEC went out in, in public channels, so I guess we need to change settings.
I like trouble.
Well, it was also decided to not have any private channels for core contributors, so yeah, that, that wouldn't be a fix. I think we need to enable capturing of email accounts.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a small fix and, uh, yeah, it would deal with most of the problems, I guess. It's fine.
Um, I think maybe I can look at either Taffo or Vanessa for changing that, uh, setting?
Yeah, I'm looking in Citix, but I don't see it. You can move on and try to Google it up.
Yeah, well, that happens. Nice. Alright, uh, that does bring us, uh, to the main portion of today's Town Hall. Let me quickly grab a timer because we will work with a timer. Uh, it's gonna be the workgroup updates. Um, the order in here is, well, it's just the, the calendar order. Um, if you for some reason really want to be earlier or later, you can, um, but I think it's a, yeah, decent one for, uh, working with. Um, additionally, we did, we did this the last time as well. If, um, if you happen to be a workgroup lead of multiple groups, yeah, feel free to just do both of them at the same time, um, that's, that's completely fine. Um, then that does bring us to the Archive Workgroup. That's the very first one on the list.
Right, I'd better stop trying to fix the form then, I don't know, and get on with this. Alright, thanks everybody. Um, yeah, Archives Workgroup, um, this month or slightly longer because we did miss, um, an update, didn't we? First of all, we've got to thank the community for taking up the meeting summary tool that's been ace. Loads of workgroups are using it now. It seems to be going pretty smoothly for the majority of them. And a couple of weeks ago, we did run a short session in Town Hall about some tips and tricks that people might help find useful to particularly tracking decisions and action items via the tool. So just for reference, I'm bunging the link to those slides in the chat. We've also been working with Ubio. Um, I can hear quite a lot of echoes. Could people mute? It's a bit distracting. Yeah, we've been working with Ubio, um, on some quite exciting AI tooling to support the archives. Particularly, we've been looking at whether an AI is able to apply human-generated tags to the corpus. And next month, Ubio is going to be looking at a dashboard that can give us insights from meeting summaries. Um, and we'll also soon be starting work on a pretty cool tagging initiative to help prep the corpus for this. So this is really where we start to move from just having a collection of records to having an actual archive that can be queried and that can give us insights. And we're also looking at the possibility, just a possibility of using the archives to collect insights about the BGI Conference in Panama, so we can actually surface insights about that. Another focus is that we're trying to encourage people to use the archives. So tonight, I think probably, Peter, you're gonna take it after the main updates. You're gonna be hearing the results of a little bounty that we offered for people to use the archives to research a workgroup that they don't go to and create a one-minute micro-report on what that workgroup's been doing this whole quarter. So we kind of hope that has familiarized some people with the archives who hadn't looked at them before and showed a little bit of what they contain. And we'll be offering future bounties in quarter two for other kind of "use the archives to find out this" tasks. So keep an eye out for that. We've also seen quite a few new people join us over the last couple of months via bounties mainly, which is going really well. Um, I've got to flag up onboarding workgroups, researching to continuous onboarding, which you'll hear about later, which demonstrates that it's good to have a few entry-level tasks for new people, which we weren't really doing much of until recently. And we found it's really supported engagement and encouraged people to get involved. Um, a couple of meetings ago, we got a comment that I'm still really proud of. "I didn't realize Archives meetings were so interesting." So you heard that here first. "It's a fascinating field. You're welcome to come and join us." And our next meeting is Wednesday week, the 3rd of April at 13:00 UTC, and the link's on the calendar. Thank you.
Amazing, here I am with my timer, just doing nothing because there's, uh, yeah, nice and concise. Awesome. Thanks a lot for sharing. And yeah, after the workgroup updates, um, yeah, we do have space. I didn't include it in the, uh, agenda, but there's space for the workgroup analysis, if that's accurate? Cool. Well then, uh, let's just move on the list, uh, bringing us to the Gwork PBL workgroup. Taffo.
Uh, Gwork PBL is right now on, uh, slow tide, and this month we had one session so far, and tomorrow is the next one. It's going to be a Q&amp;A and, uh, quick catch-up. It's not gonna be a full workshop workshop. Um, yeah, right now, two major tasks that are still like undone is the domain change. And the second one is, um, like a full assignment, the rotation on the, on the upper part. And, but the course is out. It is doable. We went through a feedback. We found out that actually, before you can even start, that you need the Discord role, uh, to have Gwork permissions. But, uh, yeah, it's, of course, it's available and people can start it. We expect or hope that people will go through it. It shouldn't take that much time. It should be less than one hour, and then also participation is rewarded with certificate in, in some ways. And, uh, also, uh, there are like feedback responses that we, to contribute to the workgroups, yeah, education and, uh, the way you felt it, we're going.
Thank you very much. Um, just checking, would you want to do others, other workgroups as well already, or just keep the?
Okay. Uh, yeah, for Treasury Guild, um, well, the last session was quite a impactful one, like it has a lot of, uh, content. One, what we already shared, the Q1 budget. And a lot of pre-preparing for quarter two requirements. And, and then it was packed in a sense because session before, a lot of questions were raised and, and organized and, uh, for, to, to go through and have like a clear clarity, so yeah, there were some decisions that were reminded and some that was clarified more and planned for your future sessions. Uh, what's coming next is probably the first on the line is more of Q2 discussions and the quarter two proposals from Treasury Guild. And there are mostly likely going to be at least two of them. One for Treasury Guild space itself and another one for, uh, Treasury Policy Workgroup that is going to be focused on treasury rules. And yeah, just refine tuning them out and explaining to the other members why they are needed or what is the benefit of choosing them. And for the last workgroup from my side would be Technology Space Workgroup. Hmm. Uh, we had quite a fun run. We, we've been doing this onboarding stuff last two months in, in the middle of actually doing the work, so it's been like on and off in both sessions. And yeah, the onboarding stuff is carrying along every new iteration. We add something new and improve the way we get people to, to join the session and the process and how to kind of manage it, the, the database, to make it simpler. And another side, uh, organizing our ambassador assets has been a much more challenging actually, um, than I initially thought. So we will at least go a few more rounds, uh, where we look at the data and look at the system wise, where could it be fitting? Before we distribute it into asynchronous tasks, because I feel like it's, it needs to come. So the quality may drop on, because of that level. But first we have a few weeks of training and before we go out of home and then try to, yeah, map out our assets, and so, yep, that's carrying along that way. So, um, this is it from my side.
Great stuff. Thanks for sharing. Um, hmm. That brings us to the R&amp;D Guilds. And I'm not quite sure who to give the stage to. Feel free to, uh, to take it.
It's all yours, uh, my friend, Rojo. I'm driving. I have my key in the car, but I'm here to
Uh, sure, sure. Okay, I wasn't ready for this. Um. Okay, what to say? Uh, in the last month, we have been, uh, going through uh, development, I guess, right? And, um, so the way how the structure works in the workgroup is that there are multiple projects that are led by different people and different people are involved. Some, you know, are involved in multiple ones, but, uh, that's besides the point. Um, we do a weekly update on this project, so, uh, we have been, uh, currently updated on multiple projects. One of them is the social media dashboard that is led by myself. Uh, another one is the, uh, collaborative database that, that is led by, uh, Curtis. And there is also, uh, uh, a community, um, measurement tool that is being worked on by Walter actively. And we have been receiving active, uh, as I said, active updates about these. Uh, for the social media dashboard, we're done with the, with the research phase and the development has already started. Um, uh, Curtis with the collaborative databases, uh, actively finishing the, the, the the research, uh, part, and, uh, I think Curtis shared with, with all of you on, on Discord, uh, a form that, uh, he requested kindly if you can, if you can fill it, that would be great. Um, and if he's here, maybe he can share it again. Um, there is, uh, yeah, Obayo as well is, uh, is, is contributing, uh, to, to the collaborative database. And, uh, I don't know if there is something else I should mention. Uh, as I said, I wasn't prepared for this, but, uh...
Sorry, I dropped this bomb on you.
No, it's okay.
But you were part of a last, last, uh, meeting, and, um, oh, yeah, the idea, I think it was work为中心, uh, we have to take forward and advance on the, on the development. We understand that we have put ourselves on the, on the point, as we have chosen some very ambitious, uh, projects. Uh, and we understand that we are gonna be able to deliver, uh, to beat some bites of it. Uh, there's this other project that, uh, Ubio is working, that I personally think is really uh, important for us, that will bring, uh, down the language barrier. Um, we, the same, the team, to send a survey to the community to gather information in that regard. Um, so I hope, uh, the community is collaborating, uh, with them too. Uh, Ubio, you wanna jump in to, you have one minute to give some update on that? But, um, on the other hand, we, yeah, we're building and I hope we can deliver stuff to the community.
I'm not sure if we have got the request, to be honest. Audio quality was subpar, let's say. It was manageable. Um, Ubio, anything from your side you want to share on, uh, R&amp;D Guild side of things? I'm sorry to put you on the spot right after joining. I think for now we'll take that as a no, I'm good. Walter? Feel free to. There's-
Advertising, uh, the, there is a survey by Curtis pending, available to all. View it not as a survey for us, but the signup sheet for you on the first, uh, fill-first serve basis. We're offering to adapt our tools to the needs of individual, uh, units and to support them. So if you don't fill out Curtis's, uh, uh, thing, we assume you're just not interested. Yes, that's the, that's the jot form. We're also experimenting with survey tools, so we'll probably use something else yet next time. And second, uh, Ubio is running a multilingual study. So if you possess more than one language, which I think just about everybody in this bunch does, and it doesn't have to be anything super exotic, but just a multilingual perspective, please take a look, provide some input. We'll appreciate it. Oh, and as a preview of coming attractions, uh, so Guillermo in Q2 will be organizing uh, a series of, uh, workshops. He is working on the proposal for that. Better onboarding, we're actually are also gonna do as a separate project, and so we'll work up a proposal for that. So we're forcing ourselves to do everything as a planned and approved project through the proposal mechanism.
That's really great to see and, and appreciated, I think. Well, more workgroups will start to use that if they experience and see it happening. Great stuff. Um, then on to the next page. That would bring us at the Onboarding Workgroup. We have Sugar here. We've got Fanny. Any takers?
It's actually Juke who's taking it. Oh, there is it.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. So for the Onboarding Workgroup, um, we've had quite a full, we've had quite a full plate, um, this quarter. Alright, um, first is that we have been, um, really, really busy with, um, uh, the continuous onboarding, you know, reports or research, rather, rather, right? And, um, that has had us very active in, you know, other workgroups and guilds, you know, trying to create the, um, research on the continuous onboarding process that, um, basically is being implemented by, um, every group, right? And, um, for those who may be new to the term continuous onboarding, right? It's just a way of, um, getting new people, um, new people who just joined the Ambassador Program more acquainted with, you know, um, what the program is about and, um, how to function in the program, right? Um, we have reports that, uh, I think Barney should be putting that in the comments in the chat box right about now, um, to research reports from, um, Onyeka and, um, and, um, Lovett, right? Love rather, right? And then, um, also we had, um, the onboarding session, an onboarding session on the 8th of February. Alright, um, it's quite elaborate to run through how that happened, but it was successful. It was fantastic. Um, and then what we did was that we created a video, a walkthrough video, on how the entire process went. Uh, the link to that should also be in the comments, so if you want to look it up, you can check it out and then, um, you can also share it with people. You know, it just gives you basic insight on, on, um, what the onboarding process, right, looks like, right? What happened on, um, on, um, the 8th of February, right? And then, um, we're gonna be having the next onboarding session on the 16th of May, right? So if you're new to the ecosystem or you're new to the Ambassador Program and, um, you're still trying to find your footing or you're just trying to find your way around, um, you're welcome to join us on the 16th of May, right? And, um, of course, we're gonna make, we're gonna make more announcements between now and then, you know, just so that you're abreast with what's going on and all of that. But then the next onboarding session will be happening on the 16th of May. This is the platform we use to bring everybody up to speed with, um, workgroups, um, 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 guilds, and I mean, the entire operational protocol of the Ambassador Program, right? And, um, as the Onboarding Workgroup, we meet every Thursdays by, um, 13:00 UTC, right? The link is in the calendar, right? The link is in the calendar. Um, so you may want to join us. I mean, well, I'm, I'm actually inviting you to join us, right? Um, there's no better place to be than the Onboarding Workgroup, right? And, um, in the Onboarding Workgroup, you're not, you don't become a member just by coming to one meeting, right? You become a member by being in three consecutive meetings, so, um, then you can take up tasks. You can, you know, uh, you can take up tasks, you can just do everything, right? But then we're super duper open to having everybody here. I can see about 28 people here. It would make a lot of sense if we had all of you in the Onboarding Workgroup, right? And then finally, uh, we have a Treasury Guild session with Andre on the 18th of April, right? Um, this session is expected to enable, you know, everybody understand how the money moves in the ecosystem, right? There's some people who may be having issues with tracking payments, you know, updating information on wallets and everything about the financial basics, right? So this session is open to everybody. It's on the 18th of April, right? So we invite everybody here to join us on the 18th of April. It's a session with the, um, with Andre from Treasury Guild, and he will be constructing the entire process of how money works, right? So that's about it. Thank you.
It's crazy how close you, uh, managed to do it in exactly four minutes. Good stuff. Um, yeah, and as in, uh, chat, uh, was, uh, mentioned, that, uh, the recording of that, uh, onboarding session is also, uh, on the Ambassador YouTube. Indeed, timing was impeccable. We agreed. Cool. Um, next on the list is the Marketing Guilds.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Um, just a quick double check. We didn't do updates for February, right? So should I include February or just March?
Uh, she wish. Um, correct. So yeah, if you want to include-
Okay, okay. Um, alright, so we wrote a lot of updated content around the Ambassador Program, um, including an update for the Singularity Net, uh, main website, as well as social media posts just with the updated information on, um, what our program is, what workgroups we have, and how to become a core contributor. Um, there was a lot of misinformation or a lot of outdated information, um, or still is, on the Singularity Net website and on the Discord, it still shows the wrong time for the Town Halls. And on the Singularity Net website, it currently shows that there's only two workgroups for the Ambassador Program. So we fixed the content and will be putting that out soon. Once the naming thing is fully settled, I don't wanna put out any content before we settle um, on what we wanna call the, the, the tag, I suppose. Uh, we also put out a call for people to, or for ambassadors, um, to send us a testimonial about the Ambassador's program. And I hope you have all received a message at some point- And I hope you have all received a message at some point from, I believe, Malik. Um, to either send a video testimonial or a written testimonial. So thank you for all of you who already sent one and we will be putting that out on social media. Last but not least, um, we set up the partnership with the Singularity Net marketing, um, team. For that, we put out a call last week and we asked you who would like to be part of a community engagement group. And I think eight people responded and said they would love to be part of a community engagement group. And what we would be doing is coming up with strategy on how to engage the wider Singularity Net community as well as implementing that strategy. So the ones that have applied to be on that group, you should have all received emails. Um, with your, uh, where I was asking you to give a brief overview over your skills that you have in the field of marketing. And the next steps on that would be for all the people that wanna be in the group, we'll be creating Discord tags as well as a D-work space. And then the first task will be, uh, will be put up. And regarding meetings, um, that's not figured out, figured out yet. We don't know if we'll have weekly meetings, bi-weekly meetings, who's gonna be meeting? Well, we're, we're still figuring that out. Um, there is tasks coming up around the OpenCock Hyperon launch, which one of the first tasks we, uh, the foundation would love us to be involved with is an explainer video on the OpenCock Hyperon Alpha launch. So I hope we have people that are interested in creating that video. Hmm, what else? Oh, putting together a list of influencers, YouTubers and podcasters, for example, in the AI and blockchain space. So if you have any contacts or you know someone that we could put on the list, it would be great if you could message me. I would really appreciate it. And last but not least, if you're still interested in joining the community engagement group, you can also message me saying that you wanna be part of it and just quickly let me know your skills and that is time's up.
Were you actually concluded or like, I mean?
Yeah, concluded. Time's up.
Great stuff. Uh, then next on the list is the video workgroup. I believe Slade is taking the honors today.
Um, hi, everyone. Uh, can you hear me? All right. So in videos workgroup, um, during, uh, this month, the month of March, uh, governance, uh, in our governance model, um, uh, roles rotation, I was appointed as the facilitator. So, uh, in this month, we have produced about, uh, twenty five videos, uh, which is a, which have, which has exponentially increased, uh, from the previous two months. Uh, when we were actually new to this governance model and, uh, uh, our social media growth has been, uh, increasing as well along with it. So, eh, on YouTube, uh, our subscribers have increased to about twenty six percent, uh, which is about like thirty six new subscribers. And views have increased to about thirty percent and the engagement to about forty six percent. Uh, similarly, uh, with Instagram, uh, we have, uh, subscription like eleven new followers, uh, about five point eight percent increase. The views have increased about, uh, two point five percent, uh, and the impressions about four point seven percent. And moving forward, uh, with Twitter, uh, our subs, uh, followers have increased a lot, uh, probably because of the Zale campaign launch, uh, it has increased to about one ninety one new followers and about twenty three percent increase there. Uh, with views increasing to about seventy three percent and, uh, engagement to about ninety four percent, which is, I think, the highest, uh, that it has been. And, uh, for TikTok, uh, our, we have like five new followers, about fourteen percent increase, uh, with views about twenty six percent increase and engagement to about, uh, forty five percent increase. Uh, video workgroup has about, uh, three new members, uh, joining this month and about two new applicants. And, uh, what we look forward for quarter number two and, uh, the coming months is that, uh, increased engagement with our social media from community using Zale and, uh, collaboration with other workgroups and guilds and develop a strategy for our contents to reach some particular audience, uh, through social media manager. So we are looking forward to actually enhance the capability of the social media manager role. So, yeah.
Sounds like, um, most if not all members are in the green. That's great stuff. Um, Anders, um, Walter called out in chat, um, he's asking for a little rate on, uh, one of the videos to, uh, share some love and click some, click the likes. Awesome. Um, that brings us to writers' workgroup. Let me quickly check.
Um, yeah, Peter, I'm here. Uh, hello, everyone. Um, uh, we want many guys. So, um, actually, uh, writers' workgroup is all, all brain of the news. Actually, um, we have published, um, eight articles this month and we made up to like about, um, let's say, um, thirteen articles or if not closer to fifteen, including, that'll be counting the articles we currently have, um, on our D-work space that are still in progress. So about like fifteen articles this month, which we still hope to post most of them. Uh, we took a bit of a, we, you know, just slowed down a bit with the Zili to actually check the effect of the Zili instead of like, uh, posting more articles to see the effect, uh, it has on our, you know, already created content. And it's been really, really, really good. Actually, ever since, um, the Zili launch, our story starts as, uh, the lowest it has had on average for views has been forty three views and twenty reads, uh, which is, uh, similar to our numbers, our former numbers before the Zili launch. And, um, we actually peaked on with, uh, the day after Zili launch, we had, um, one hundred and twenty one views and sixty two reads. Currently puts in our match, uh, views at our all-time highest of, uh, one thousand two hundred views and counting and, uh, over six hundred, uh, reads right now. Uh, I can say the Zili has had an impressive, um, engagement with the social media platforms, including, uh, for MindPlays, um, the Singularity Net blog and, um, our YouTube channel as well as our Twitter. Uh, we've created a task tillow to these platforms and they've been seeing an increased growth with our, uh, our ambassador program channel on Twitter is currently, um, more than its nine subscribers from around like one seven seven since we added the, um, task, uh, listed the quest on Zili. Also, the Mindplate Podcast was on around seven hundred and eighty three subscribers since we started, uh, the Zili. And now it's on eight hundred and twenty seven subscribers. So that was, uh, really cool. We've been having more people engage our content on Medium by leaving comments, um, highlighting, um, areas of the article that stand out to them. So we can, uh, create more discussions on it. And, uh, yeah, you know, giving people something to look at the moment they open the article. And, um, that's a, that's a really good thing on our side. For the Zili itself, we currently have sixty four, um, ac- active participants. Yes, I think, yeah, we have sixty four active participants and the Zili sprint is ending in five days and fifteen hours. So prior to the, um, Zili ending, we'll be doing like, um, an announcement and a bit of call out, like, uh, let's say the last three days, give a bit of call out for, uh, the Zili so people can know that the quests are ending. And, um, we will be adding, uh, like today I added like about three new, uh, quests. So from now to the end of the Zili, there should be, you guys can expect like more and more quests to make up for it. And most of these quests are actually going to be, um, having claim limits to make it more exciting and more interesting. So stay tuned and, uh, try to keep your eye on the quest boards for Zili. We adding more tasks or you can just keep your eye on the Zili channel, uh, Discord, which, uh, we get a ping every single time there's a new task. And we'll also, that will also be the place, I believe, the first place we release, uh, um, summary and our leaderboard, uh, coming to the end of the Zili. And then for, you know, consequence, Zilis and stuff, um, moving forward, you should be expecting that we are gonna, um, the leaderboard, the updates, um, probably even daily summaries. Since, uh, like I said, uh, last week, last two weeks, uh, this is actually the beta launch to test everything to see if there's anything we can improve with the Zili or anything we need to adjust. And I'm so far so good, we have everything, uh, going smoothly. So you can expect, uh, that to be updated. And, uh, last thing from, uh, the writers' workgroup in Q1 is we actually, uh, moving forward with our, um, our, uh, roadmap, technically, we have, uh, started our project in graphics to actually bring all the brand guidelines together for the ambassador programs. Since, uh, most of the fact that we noticed on Twitter, when the video will go space the content out and the writers will go put the content out, it's, um, yeah. If not, uh, like opposite scale of, they're kind of like, um, separated to, almost for anyone looking at the page can almost imagine that it's been managed from like more than one person and that the, uh, assets being used are quite different. We have, uh, changes in colors, changes on, um, brand assets and also changes in a few other items that, uh, like maybe like logos, illustrations and also on our last call, we actually met with a graphic designer. Uh, he's also taking up the, uh, current project. Uh, it's supposed to last for like three weeks. So once we have like a brand guideline with, uh, our typography, our colors, illustrations, symbols and every other useful information, brand assets in one place, and we can call it that. We'll be sharing it with the entire program so everyone can stay in tune with that. And also with the social media management and the Zili campaign, uh, disposed with Slade, actually. And, um, I'll be speaking with the social media managers for both video workgroup and the writer workgroup. So we can get our Twitter management and other social media management, uh, synchronized. And we can have like, uh, scheduled content and actual content going out till to what everything the, uh, ambassador program is going on. So that way we can have, uh, basically without more marketing campaigns that look more tailored to everything we are doing. And it can seem like we have basically just one voice, one, uh, image and everything. And we can promote that, uh, best interest. So, uh, yeah. Every, we still have a few things that we've not yet tackled and we'll be using the last few days of March to do that. And you can expect, uh, more from, uh, next month. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Almost within four minutes, let's say. Not quite, but there, yeah, good stuff. I think we'll, uh, we'll be able to build on quite a bit on this, uh, experimentation with Zili. I think so far the numbers are looking, yeah, quite impressive. All right, um, where are we on the clock? Ten minutes to go. Meh. Somewhat close. Um, let's see, next is, uh, gamers guilds. I'm not super sure what I can give the honors of.
Yeah, it's hoofy, I think. Yeah.
Yep, uh, you guys hear me? Uh, hello, everyone. So I am here to represent the report, quarterly report, because, uh, we didn't give the updates of Jan and February month. So I will go briefly on that. So initially on the onset, the gamers guild liked a defined process during the month of January. But it's important to note that we were not disorganized. Uh, we liked the structure. Then recognizing the need for the advancement, uh, we tried to observe various elements and decided to propel the gamers guild moving forward. So initially, uh, the guild's focus was on participating in events like the AI World Fair held on the decentralized land. And then, uh, subsequently, we explored the Sophia Words initiative on the ambassador program. So we inspired, this inspired us. So we tried to consider a similar approach for our guild. Um, then drawing the inspiration from the Sophia Words, uh, we decided to pursue integration it with the Roblox through its user-friendly interface and suitability for every developers of any levels to use it. Um, then we proposed ambassador program on Roblox and continue, continue to develop and refine it. Uh, so every participant and contributor on our group can familiarize with the Roblox, how to use it. For this, we hosted the gaming sessions and educational workgroups on how to use the Roblox video, which serves as a front development platform. So then we moved to the department and departmentalization concept, which we integrate on the Roblox. So for the efficiency, we adopt, um, uh, departmentalization concepts like similar to the universities, the ambassador towns, those as a central hub in that project, which is surrounded by the various departments, guilds and workgroups of the ambassador program. So basically, the guild has made significant process in integrating Roblox in activities forecasting the gaming community within the Singularity Net ecosystem. Is it your, uh, goal is to gamify the ambassador program's promotion and foster education through gamification? Now the slate will give you the further updates. Uh, it's up to you, Slate.
Yeah, um, thank you, Biya. So, uh, the updates for, uh, the month of Jan and Feb, uh, was given by Hoofy. So I'm gonna go over for the month of March. So basically, uh, let me just go and give a brief overview. Uh, the gamers guild is actually building a virtual reality of ambassador program. And, uh, it's basically being made on Roblox. And, uh, the model that we are, uh, implementing is a university-type model. So it would be, um, like ambassador tunnel in between and there will be departments which are, which are going to be the workgroups and guilds. Uh, so in each workgroup and guild, there will be an NPC, a non-playable character, uh, that would be representing each of the workgroup lead of the workgroups inside of the ambassador program. So, and, uh, so what we did in that development phase of, uh, in the month of March was we actually implemented the departmentalization concept and, uh, the infrastructure was laid out. And, uh, we did, held a voting on, uh, which workgroup should be created at first and, um, uh, most votes was for the onboarding workgroup. So we started from there. And then we were actually collecting information from the onboarding workgroup, like what do they want their, uh, NPC to talk about? Like in most of the times. So, um, there would be like, uh, most likely questions that people will like to ask when they actually re, uh, go to a workgroup and they want, uh, some answers from it and they don't want to read the documentation. So, uh, they will just go to the NPC and actually ask questions from him directly. So, and after, uh, collecting the information, we actually have already implemented that information there. And, uh, the collaborators were added, uh, who were interested in the making of this, uh, project, uh, to the Roblox, uh, collaborators hub. And, uh, the prompting system for NPCs also created. And most probably that we are going to be presenting our first workgroup in the upcoming town hall meetings, uh, as well. Uh, before we get, uh, the, like, uh, the confirmation from the onboarding workgroup that they do actually want that to be their workgroup presented in the, uh, Roblox. And, um, yeah, our first department is completed. And, uh, most probably we'll be presenting that in the next meeting for the gamer skill. So, yeah, one more thing, uh, we are also working on initiative. So, uh, there was a discussion in marketing that, uh, we can actually host games, um, uh, for the community, for the wider community. So, uh, we were also thinking like, uh, if there would be a collaboration, we can like put out tweets and, uh, then we can like host games and so everybody can collaborate in between because Roblox has servers and they have a lot of capacity. So, yeah, that could also be done and live events can also be hosted in our project as well. And yeah, uh, there's also one more thing that we are looking forward to and that is the demonetization through Roblox. And, yeah, that would, uh, we can also implement that on Zili as well, like through visits and in-game, uh, incentives as well. And we are also going to be launching the, uh, Roblox group. So for early members and supporters, you're going to begin getting some incentives, uh, from us and some tags when you join the game and you will have like early supporter or something like that. So, yeah. Us and some tags when you join the game and you will have like early supporter or something like that. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to uh joining that. Um yeah, then seeing uh knowledge base workgroup is already. Dealt with, I somehow managed to skip education on the very first or on the previous uh slide. Apologies, Tommy. Um. Would you be able to give an update on education?
Um well, actually, it's not me that's gonna give the um update because due to BGI. Uh I haven't been too active and Slate has been doing a fantastic job. Uh covering, so he's going to give a bit of an update. But thank you for recognizing us.
Of course. Slate, all yours.
Okay, so. So um Education Guild have been working on Ambassador Certification Program and uh. Which was proposed in this quarter and have been discussed in for a long time. And uh we have been working on uh infos and bits on it uh for the Ambassador Certification Program and uh. About ninety percent of these are done and we have covered about uh fifteen projects out of the total seventeen, so. It's almost in on its way to completion. Uh we have also been looking for um. Um different platform for uh in on which we can actually host these. Uh this uh Ambassador Certification Program where people can go and like take this uh test or whatever you wanna call it. And um then uh we, as we move on with these infos and videos, we are also shifting towards quizzes creations. So there will be a quiz made for uh from each of these uh for each of these projects, like a ten-question quiz. And uh most probably all of them will be getting integrated into the platform that we are going to be selecting for education of this. So uh yeah, uh we do know that uh we are late on this and uh it should have been completed by the end of this quarter, but. Uh some things happen like BGI and uh uh so that's why it's going to be shifted towards next quarter and um. Most probab- most probably that we are going to be completing it by the end of that uh end of the next quarter. And um one more thing uh to add here that uh we are also finalizing budget for Q two and uh we are also adding a lot of. A new stuff to Education Guild as well and uh that would be helping in the. Initiative for the Supervisory Council and the one uh the document that had been suggested and uh. Also focusing on other aspects of uh AGI and AI. So, yeah.
Cool, well done. Thanks for sharing. And then last, but not least on the list would be the Governance Workgroup. Uh we already did put a bit of an update during the mentions, calling out the. Votes for budget approval. Um let's see what else is there. Well, basically, the um. And and do chime in if I'm skipping on something or if anybody wants to uh take the lead on this, you can. Um but the two main outcomes of the call besides um yeah, getting that vote live. Decision uh life rather, uh that would be to turn the meetings into weekly since there's just. Too much governance stuff going on and yeah, having a bi-weekly session for that is a bit. Yeah, just not enough. If at some point, yeah, shows that we're just. Don't have any topics, then we can always refer it back to bi-weekly. And there was also an idea for making a proposal to um. Turn the workgroup into a guild and that's uh the origin of that was. Um decentralized AI agents sub-project which could turn into a workgroup and. Well, perhaps anybody that was around earlier uh wants to chime in on that, as I do feel underqualified for that.
I've just put the link to Felix's doc about um turning into a guild into the chat in case anyone wants to look.
That I believe is uh still a very empty document, uh just a framework. But of course, it's it's very open to input, um.
I see a lot of new faces in this meeting chat too, so here we basically. Had heard of a lot of workgroups and guilds that are already existing, but because of new quarter is starting. And if you've already been aware of some workgroups and you have your own research you're doing, that could be. Or should be included by Ambassador Program, either in decentralization or collaboration or. Some marketing ideas how to help Singularity Net, then this is also an opportunity for you to. Join any of the sessions and share your ideas. And from that, we help you to. Get to the proposals on this or integrate them in already existing spaces we have. So feel free to connect in Discord or right here or wherever you see these messages.
Alright, cool. Um then that concludes the workgroup updates and as promised at the start of the call. I do want to give a archival workgroup some, I think the idea was to keep it at one minute each, uh correct me if I'm wrong there.
Yeah, that was right. Um one person's had to drop off because it's past eight, but yeah.
Oh yeah, I'm still here, buddy.
Are you still here? Excellent. You want, do you wanna go first?
Oh yeah, that's fine.
Alright, just to quickly say what this is, as I said before, we put our bounty to ask people to use the archives to research on what's been going on in a workgroup. That they didn't do, that they, sorry, that they don't go to, so they didn't know other than what's in the archive. So over to you, Duke.
Okay, um so real quick, I was um I was to look at the um knowledge-based workgroup. And um the um the writers, the writers um workgroup, right? So I think um. Fundamentally, the knowledge-based workgroup, you know, um this, they were set, they've been set out in this quarter to aggregate. You know, the ambassador program assets and relevant information on the guidebook, right? And um the three most um cardinal things I pointed out from all of their operations, you know, across the quarter. Has been one, they decided to use the new mirror board, you know, and discontinue adding knowledge-based assets to. The administrative and the administrative board, right? And then um they also created an onboarding feedback form. That's mainly meant for new members, you know, um I think they did that in February, um if I'm correct. And then um finally, something they I I noticed they did was that uh they coordinated with the writers' group. To validate, the the writers' workgroup to validate the items, you know, you know, for their guidebook. Right? And um yep, that was it for the knowledge base, of course, the midterm bi-weekly. So their meetings are not as regular as every other um workgroup of guild. Right? And then similarly for the writers, um the writers had a goal to reach one thousand reads on Medium. By the end of um February twenty twenty four. Um I'm not sure I saw, I saw any. Anything that um corroborated whether they had met that goal, but I saw something. I saw something in their reports that said that they had um an increased readership, right? Ever since they had set up, set out to reach this goal, they had, I think, about seven hundred, there about, you know, but um. Yeah, so they've been being real good on this. And then um the writers also set out to revive Substack for weekly events and for emails. You know, but uh I, if I'm correct, this um this activity was more or less for the uh. Internal um stuff is, it was more for the um to members of the re- and the writers' workgroup. Um I know, like the general ambassadors um program and stuff. You know, and then they also had um um the Snet ambassadors medium page officially become a publication. You know, in this quarter, they had the Snet ambassadors page officially becoming a a um a publication. And then I think the final thing I I. I noted from um the reports from the Writers' Work Guild, workgroup is that um you created a thread. On um BGI event, right? So that that's pretty much what I could gather for um the both workgroups. Knowledge-based workgroup and the writers' workgroup. Thank you.
You. I see Franklin raising a hand. Feel free to speak up.
Oh sure. Hello, everyone. Okay, I'm representing, or I did a report on the. Research and Development Guild. Yeah, so in the first part of twenty twenty four, they worked together a lot. They actually had quite a lot of meetings, like about five meetings, you had um the Q one. In which they had so many things broken down. The first thing they told, the first thing they did was they talked about how to make the plans for the year better. Initiate files and everything. Everyone joined it and they made sure that we were all on the same page. They made the budgets for the year and made sure everyone got exactly what was needed. Then they had their project roadmap and they they proposed the project or sets of projects in their work on which included. The web three contributors dashboard, the impact on lingual differences, the social media dashboard, the collaboration skills. Database, the operational optimization, the online presence optimization, the entity connections. And um upscaling workshops. Then also they had the roadmap and agenda towards the internet. The first step was to integrate it to other workgroups and then they refined the guard operational structure and governance system. They had interviews with other workgroup leaders, surveys and also town hall discussions. Then they had a result piece, database implementation and they utilized the knowledge graph. Then. They also assigned task, tasks like developing blueprint and refining proposals were given to different members. Each person's work helped the guild move closer to its goals, showing that everyone was dedicated to making progress. Overall, the research and developments got both well in twenty twenty four Q one. It talked a lot and shared ideas and made a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Um what CJ Franklin, go for it.
Hi, everyone. Um. So here are the major highlights cited from the video world group. The video world group um raised multiple discussions centered around the BGI event. That's BGI Summit in Panama and how individuals can apply and go in person. Um secondly, the video world group um. Um raised multiple discussions centered on um budget allocation and how they can reward their members as they contribute along the way. Also, the video world group lead uh died um Roger, he introduced the concept of recurring tasks. Where each member of the of the of the workgroup will be responsible for a specific task for a period of um four weeks onto the state. I, for example, social media management is assigned to one person for a period of four weeks and. Like that. And um lastly, they also uh uh um there were multiple discussions centered around. Uh onboarding process that is welcoming new members and also the shared um. That um new members are welcome to join the video world group and they made available some soft tasks. On the work task board where they take some tasks and also complete uh a little bit of survey. So that's all from my part. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And then moving on to Clement.
Yeah, so I I was assigned to do for the Education Guild and I must say, I think um. They're quite heavy in terms of their engagement for the last quarter, so I'll try and keep this as less detailed as possible, so. Um for the very initial January, I think I saw that their discussion centered around. You know, collaborative efforts to improve and promote, you know, their video making and infographics. Uh for the Ambassador Certification Program quizzes. And then they also, you know, talked about the the archive tool and. Sort ways to improve quality of their content. And then around February, um they had discussions. Around the the decision-making software. And um they also talked about initiating processes to upload the workgroup videos. To the Ambassador Social Program. And then they also sought approval from the spin-off projects of the Singularity Net for the distribution of their. Curated contents in terms of their infographics and videos. And then they also talked about, you know, introducing slide text for the. Ambassador Certification Program in Google Classroom. Then uh moving to March, they reviewed their contents like they always do. I I think I'd give them good credit for that, so a couple of videos, they did reviews in them, um. Between the gold video and the awakening health video, so that stands out for me and they had um discussions around. Um utilizing more of social media publicity, you know, utilizing lives and YouTube podcasts as well as hosting. And Twitter spaces. And then I think discussions were also introduced around translating these curated contents. You know, to broaden the effects of the Ambassador Certification Program. And then um they also um. Uh reached a decision that the quizzes would be undertaken by persons who are the curators of the infographics. Or the videos themselves. And then they are also keen on bringing about a new platform for um the. Ambassador Certification Program introduction, as they also talked about um proposalizations for quarter two. And they also discuss a quarterly budget, so they've done a lot and they meet really frequently and I commend the fact that they have been very heavy on content.
They are, absolutely. CJ, you have hand up?
Um sorry about that.
No worries, uh was a legacy hand then. And then I think on Yeka, yes, for the final one, go ahead.
Alright, guys, so good day, everyone. So I was assigned on a survey for Gamers Guild. So for Gamers Guild, earlier this quarter, Gamers Guild created a game on Roblox. And actually had a gaming session with his guild members due to Roblox flexibility. Then Gamers Guild conducted a an educational workshop on how to use Roblox Studios. This was held so that anyone interested that would love to contribute to the project, because they have an ongoing project which is called. The Ambassador Program on Roblox. So anyone interested could actually get to know the environment of Roblox Studios. Now, Gamers Guild actually approached some workgroups, but I guess just for now, they met with only the onboarding workgroup. So they collected some information on key members so that they could input them into the gaming system. So far, Gamers Guild has created an infrastructure for the project and also they have created the first department. For the project, which is called the Ambassador Program on Roblox. So this is where they are at now. Thank you. That's all for Gamers Guild.
And thank you. I do believe, looking at this list, that this concludes for now. That's interesting to hear this perspective from outsiders on workgroups. Judith, you have hand up. Feel free to speak.
Um I just have a question. Um the core contributors tag is that live because I've been trying to use it and. It's not working. Not sure if that's on my site or your.
Maybe uh rights-related, um. Vanessa was doing, uh was able to to tag earlier and um I think, I I think it's um. Rights-related, so.
I'm not sure if it is. What I found is that if you've got to put the space after core, core space contributors and then it came up, maybe that's it.
But even if I just put at C or R, like nothing comes up.
No, it didn't for me until I got to the end of the word and put a space and then it did.
Oh, okay. I'll try that.
Yeah, it was expected to be showing at the C. No, when I do core space, it doesn't recognize either.
Yeah, for me, it's like if you don't press the space, but I do see core contributed. Yeah, for me, it's like if you don't press the space, but I do see core contributors.
I'll figure it out. Thank you.
I'm not sure what's up there, but I'm thinking, maybe I should change the role then to not have spaces? I mean, silly, but. Alright, um. Well, I think that brings us pretty much to a wrap. Um. Quick check on the room, if there's any things to touch on right now before closing up for today. I guess not. Alright, um. Well, that brings us to the conclusion of today. Thanks, everybody, for uh for being here and sharing your time with us and also sharing your updates on on the workgroups. Uh a quick check, I I do want to ask, like, is it still a, would you say it's still a good approach to have a a monthly workgroup updates call like this? Any thoughts on that or anybody especially thinking it's a it's a really bad idea now, having had two of these sessions?
Oh, that's a good idea, not that it's a bad idea.
Yeah, I also like it. Um like quite an educated session, I would say. Gotcha.
So I I I I think it would rather be a bad idea not to have it. Yeah, I also think you have at least something to share at the end of the month rather than every week. So, yeah.
It was a little funny to hear about somebody else give you a meeting summary. So actually, it didn't even have to be here. But maybe, but should have been that those who are training first, he gave impression and then you cannot finish with summary, or if you don't have anything to say, you can say, well, participant, Chris knew it all. Message was clear.
It kind of focuses the mind a little bit to think about what you're gonna say and what has been the big things each month, so I kind of like it.
Alright, cool. Then that's it for today.